In just a little bit of time, with a gentle swivel of a tassel, things will change.
Despite what some may think, graduation is not just an abrupt end to an experience that started at the age of six. It is the delicate close of one chapter in the eager beginning of another. Each of us has faced our own battles, whether academic, personal, or social, but we've also celebrated victories, both big and small. We have learned resilience, not by having straight A's or passing the tests, but by grappling with complex problems that don't offer easy answers.
Choose to be who you want to be, and dare to embrace that change, in fact, be excited about it.
Maya Angelou said, "We delight in the beauty of the butterfly, but we rarely admit the changes it has gone through to achieve that beauty."
Never forget where you came from. I challenge you to write the next chapters of your hometown. Because absent of you, we are absent the story of Nelson County.
Most apart from Nelson County High School, with our minds wide open to the wonders of the world, it is up to us to shape the future.
As you enter the batter box of life, life will throw you some curveballs along the way. Stand tall and take your swing. Your dreams won't become reality if you aren't willing to take the next step. And now, by the virtue of the power and authority vested in me by the Commonwealth of Virginia, I do hereby declare you graduates of Nelson County High School. Please turn your tassels. Congratulations, class of 2024.
Applause to the flag of the United States Square. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Noel Entertain, motion to approve the agenda unless there are any changes or questions?
I make motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay, the agenda is approved. Thank you very much. So we go to the second part of the meeting where we will be doing our recognition and presentations.
All right.
All right.
So, yep, I have the privilege of being able to do the fun part of this, and this is the recognition portion. So we have quite a few this evening, so bear with me, but this is one of our favorite parts of the evening. So the first group that I will recognize is I want to be able to say thank you to our student representatives. The first person that I want to recognize is Marissa Garrett, and that's the second. So, Marissa, is this your second year?
No.
This is your first year? Yep. And so, we just want to say thank you in being recognized for the commitment to providing valuable communication between Nelson County School Board and CPS student body. So we want to say thank you very much. We're going to, I think this person, and also this person over here. So step forward.
You want to hear something?
No, okay, okay. Yep, we also have a second student representative, and he was not able to make it this evening. That is Sir Isaiah Turner. So he is, one thing, we'll kind of go back and show be a part of something later on. The individuals that serve in this role quite frequently are doing five, six, seven other things. And so they're super busy individuals. And so to be able to carve out a couple hours once a month for this is super special, but they're integrating this into everything else that they're involved in. So I just want to say thank you to Isaiah Turner as well. Thank you. I believe next up is, is it Mr. Brown? Am I reading the agenda correctly?
He's on the way.
He's on the way, so I'm not going to do him next. I am going to do, what am I doing?
School recognition, for start with.
Yes, 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 yes. I don't know how many of you, how many of you were able to go out, yes, to the Willy Wonka the Musical, and that was a couple weeks ago, held at Rockfish, and it was a, I think, two separate productions. And so it was really great to see all the students participating in this. But in order to get to that point, you have to have someone who's organizing it, putting it together, and it isn't a small job. But we want to be, I guess, you know what, I don't think, I think it's here today. Yeah, so I'm going to bring you up. Yes. Everyone, this is Tony Coffey, she's the principal at Rockfish River Elementary School. Also, behind the scenes part of helping assist with this, but we just want to say thank you for your hard work, volunteerism, and support of our Rockfish River Elementary School students by putting on a fantastic production of Willy Wonka. So we just want to say thank you very much. Do you want to talk about who all was involved in putting this together?
Super staff. We have Reagan Jackson, who was our music teacher. Courtney Tresslow, our secretary, helped with the stage setup. Of course, custodian David Johnson helped with that as well. And then one of our IA's, Megan Echols, who was also a parent, but she supported the costume backstage with the performance, and numerous other parents, and of course, students as well.
And food was involved, little trees were involved. Yeah, it was a big community event, and quite a big.
And our kids' eagles helped with that as well.
Yes. So, we're going to take a picture with you in it, but we're also, I'm going to find Reagan at school, and the other individuals as well, so. Thank you, Grandma. All right, next up is Fort Ty River Elementary. So everyone who's involved with the Earth Day. So I know you were, so you can come on up as well. Miss Cofflin can come up.
Sure.
So, in order to celebrate Earth Day, Ms. Taylor and Miss Cofflin worked with several other individuals in order to organize something that was encompassing of the students but also staff in order to educate and celebrate Earth Day. So we just want to say thank you for your hard work, volunteerism, and support of our Ty River Elementary School students by your efforts in teaching about and celebration of Earth Day. So would you like to share just a little bit about what the event was and what all took place?
We had a 1K. We had help from Mike Cargill. He was streaming it with the drains, and numerous teachers. The art teacher, she did a flyer. Mr. Garrett, and it was numerous teachers.
So, all grades?
Yes.
Yep, all grades involved. So what a wonderful inclusive way to be able to promote Earth Day, but also get kids physically active in the celebration, but also learning about it. So we just want to say thank you very much. So we're going to smile at that nice lady over there. Perfect. Oh, did you get one? Did you want one? We got it. Okay, I don't want to die. We give you this certificate, but it's for the whole group, okay?
Yeah.
So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Yes, thank you. All right, so the next event that we want to celebrate is at Nelson Middle School. So I'm going to bring Ricky Perry up. Mr. Veleco, I'm also going to bring you up since I'm creating a theme here. I'm sharing the love. That's how I'm framing it. So thank you for your hard work, volunteerism, and support of our Nelson Middle School students through the development and execution of Career Day Event. This is a great way to educate our students about various careers and to support local businesses and organizations. So would you like to add anything about the participation and how this came about and why you guys are putting on an event like this?
Sure. We, this is our third year to have a Career Day Event, and we ask for folks from the community largely to come and support kids' education on what careers are out there to help motivate them and inspire them at the scholastic level, but also to get them excited about their futures and to think that far ahead. Can I mention some of the folks?
Yes, you may.
Okay, I brought a list. We have Dr. Leslie Hatfield, Jesse Rutherford, Eddie Torres, Richard Howell and his dog, Sky, Catherine Canada, Francisco Mayo, Jason Bronstein, Bill Perry, Michael Downey from Department of Forestry, DJ Hatfield, Raglan Automotive, which was Prentice and Chrissy Raglan, Jim Miller from PHI Aeromedical, and they actually brought a helicopter one year to go to our Career Day, which was phenomenal. And then Ryan Schilling, Cody Shiplett, Michael Profit from VDOT, Mark Embry, Jeff Jeremiah Templeton, Keith Brown, William Brown, and Curtis Brandon from the Nelson County Sheriff's Department. So we had, great.
One of the things I'd like to say is that also, a lot of our community visitors is introduced and exposed to like the talent pool that they have coming to them, and also to get excited about, you know, one of the presentations about math and being a professor and understanding the role of math, and math is important even if you're not going to go on and teach it later, but it has its present. Anything you'd like to add about that day and event?
No, I would just like to thank our community members for their willingness to be there and to support our students and our school. It was a great event.
Great. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you. Just again, a gorgeous smile will make you look like you're happy. Act like we like each other. Yep. Awesome. Thank you so much. And then, yes, thank you. Congratulations. And last but not least, one of the things that we want to recognize at the high school level is, we have a theme here. We have a career pathways theme going on, but we want to recognize those individuals involved in the FCC LA, more specifically, national qualifiers. So my representatives today from FCC LA, would you like to come up? Including Ms. Tyree. And Mr. Walker, will you also come up and join? I'm going to leave you out. We're going to sandwich you. He's going to be on that far side. And so I'll read to you what the certificate says. Give Mr. Walker and Ms. Tyree an opportunity to talk about the qualifications for this and what this means. So congratulations to all students and staff and their efforts and success at this school year. Good luck at the National Leadership Conference. So do you want to add a little bit more about who these individuals are and what this means historically and moving forward?
Yeah, absolutely. So this is Marissa Garrett. She's a senior. She was actually the first one to ever qualify for the national conference last year for FCC LA at Nelson County High School. So this year. So this year, it's been really exciting just to kind of see, you know, her and also the other kids all rise to the occasion and be able to make that big step and qualify for nationals. This is Navea Willard. She's a senior. This is her fourth year in FCC LA, and she was able to also qualify for the national conference this year as well. And then Ms. Ava Proctor, she is a sophomore, and this was your first time ever going and competing, and she also went and she qualified along with her group as well. I do not have all of my students here, but they all worked so hard. They put so much effort into these projects, and they were so passionate about them, which made me so happy to turn, because I kind of started growing a little passionate about their projects. I'm not going to cry. But I think for me, the biggest highlight about this, not only were they able to grow in their leadership abilities and academic abilities as well, but we had so much fun, and we made some of the best memories. And, you know, we still talk about it. We have these crazy inside jokes now from that experience. And, you know, it's not just an opportunity for them to grow as students, for them to grow as people too, and inform those relationships that'll last a lifetime. So it was a really great experience. This was my first year having anything to do with FCC LA, and they, they taught me the ropes, honestly. They really did. They taught this old dog new tricks, and that's kind of what I've been telling them the whole year. I'm like, you guys tell me what you need from me, and we'll do it. And that's just been kind of the thing all year. So just, you know, huge congratulations to this group of kids. They are amazing. They are going, and I'm sending quite a few seniors off to the real world that I'm just, I have chills. I'm going to miss them so much, and it's, it's going to be hard to part with them. But I'm so proud and I'm so fortunate to, stop it. I'm so fortunate to just, you know, be involved with them and get to experience this with them, so.
I'll say the group, they worked really hard all year, and Ms. Tyree didn't realize, so she started fundraising and doing things for FCC LA back in the fall at football games. So they cut cakes, cookies, and stuff like that. And so they worked really hard throughout the year. They had some great projects, and I think they were going to represent Nelson County pretty much going forward and make us proud.
Do you have something coming up Saturday?
We do, yes. So we have.
My nose over there, Jesus. Sorry, I just hid my nose over there.
Never hurts for. So we have a wide array of different fundraisers that we've already kind of scheduled and that are in the works. But this weekend in particular, we have a car wash. It is at, what's the?
The RE/MAX, the old love park.
Yes, okay. I'm not as familiar with this area. I'm a Lynchburg native, and I'm slowly but surely learning. But that is where our car wash is going to be. We will be there from, we're going to start setting up at 7:30, so we'll open up around 8, stay there until 12. If you guys want to come get your car washed, you know, we have, a lot of kids are really good at cleaning. You know, you can come look at my kitchen if you want proof. But yeah, so just, you know, if you have the time, if you want to come out, get your car washed, even, you know, just a donation, anything helps. No donation is too small. But these kids have worked really, really hard. So I'm just, I'm trying to do all the fundraising that I can to help get them to where they need to be, so.
Yes.
Oh, and there's also, sorry, I know, there's a lot, there's a lot. We also have a breakfast that's scheduled at Ann's Restaurant. If you guys are familiar with Ann's, I love Ann's, they're amazing. But basically, they have decided to open up on Saturday, which is, they're usually not open on Saturdays, which is really nice that they're willing to do that for us. So basically, what will happen is they'll open the restaurant up, we'll come in and just kind of, you know, you'll say, hey, I'm here for Nelson County FCC LA. You eat your breakfast, and then a certain percentage of that will go back to us. So that'll really help us kind of start to, like I said, I have a lot of fundraisers that are going. So it's all going to add up and hopefully get them to Orlando, Florida, where the national conference will be this year. We also get to go buy Disney World too, which is really exciting. So not only is it, like I said, a really good experience for them to grow with students, but also, these are a lot of firsts, you know? These are, for some people, once-in-a-lifetime opportunities. They're taking me places that I have never been before, and I think that is one of the most amazing things about this organization. So, yes, we have Ann's. Am I missing anything?
Probably something that'll come up in public comments.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
I think that's everything. You miss anything? So we're going to take a picture real quick. So why don't we here? Yeah, we from the area. And I'll probably give it to Ms. Tyree. Still, okay, we're going to go on to our business honor roll. See, no, I can't hear? We'll get you. Sorry.
Yes.
We can come on up. You're right here. Thank you very much. So one of the things that we do every year is we nominate businesses in the local area who have really gone above and beyond to do various things to support Nelson County Public Schools, students, individuals. And one of the things we're just so thankful for in the last couple of years is the willingness of Saunders Brothers to support our staff in teacher appreciation, whether it's free pansies at Thanksgiving, teacher appreciation last year, but it's the overall support. I think just recently, we had some of our new nursing students go over and provide some valuable skill sets that they're practicing, but also give back to the community. So we're just so thankful for everything that you do to support us and helping encourage us to give back to the community as well. So we just want to say thank you very much, and you're one of the 2025 Business Honor Roll Recognized for Nelson County Public Schools. And this is on behalf of the Virginia School Board Association. So this is to a state entity that helps work with us. So we want to say thank you very much for everything that you've done.
Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, my gosh. Thank you for her. Thank you very much. All right, unfortunately, the next recipient, next recipient for the 2025 Business Honor Roll was not able to be here this evening, but we wanted to recognize Creation Appreciation Landscaping. So I don't believe any representative from that, and no, Jeremy wasn't able to make it. But we want to say thank you so much. They have been generous in offering their services in supporting multiple schools, one of which particularly our fields. So they have given quite a bit back to us to be able to support, making sure our fields are at the level that our students deserve. Also looking at how they can help in other areas, just not in the competition field. They've helped maintain at the high school, the football field, soccer field, also worked on the fields over at Rockfish, kind of a little bit everywhere. So we just want to say thank you so much for having Creation Appreciation Landscaping be so supportive of Nelson County Public Schools. So thank you very much. And last but not least, we want to recognize Virginia Farm Bureau, particularly the Livingston Office. And again, unfortunately, Mr. Harvey was not able to be with us this evening. I know it's been a tough week for him and his family, so we want to have our thoughts with them. But we also want to recognize how much that Farm Bureau does for our students and our schools, you know, how they are so supportive of FFA and how they're able to really contribute to our students and all the things that take place. And they're supportive of all of our students. That's some, that is one of those areas that they, every year, they, you know, pay for a lot of what FFA does. And so we just appreciate what they do, and we want to say thank you and publicly recognize Virginia Farm Bureau, the Livingston Office. So thank you so much. Okay, next up, we are going to do our One Nelson Awards. And so this is one of, again, a fun thing that I get to do every, every month, is recognize a certain community member, a classified employee, and also a certified employee, and how they have gone out of their way to support that One Nelson mentality. And what that is, is it takes all of us, it takes all parts of the community, all parts of the schools, everyone, to be able to allow Nelson County Public Schools to be successful. So what I try to do is recognize individuals, they're nominated, and then we kind of go through and, and select the winners. And so the first we'll recognize, and I don't think he is able to make it this evening, but maybe, but is. Caseros Boiso, and he is from Rockfish River Elementary. So I'll go ahead, and unfortunately, Ever was not able to make it, but I'll go ahead and read why he was selected. Ever is always a friendly face when he interacts with both peers and adults. He is in the TAG, which is a talented and gifted program. He goes out of his way to help his classmates when it comes to explaining a concept or other things. Additionally, Ever participated in the Rockfish River Elementary School production of Wonka. He was Mr. Wonka himself. So yes, he was quite loud and proud out in front. He did a fantastic job. He did a wonderful job and took his role very seriously. Ever is a wonderful student and a great classmate. He is doing a great job and does great things. So we want to say congratulations to Ever. He will also receive a One Nelson Award, so I will make sure I find him over at Rockfish some point in time tomorrow or even Monday. So we will find him, and he will get his award. Our next One Nelson Award winner is from the community, and so Ms. Elizabeth Liz Wilbur. Are you able to join us? So here with me, I'm going to read through why you weren't, yep, that's a lot of my part. I don't know about you. But Liz worked at NCHS for years as an English teacher, and since retirement, has helped the drama department with countless costumes. Last year, Coach Baker asked if we knew anyone who could help with a torn jersey. Immediately, we thought of Liz, and she happily helped us out before a game. This year, Coach reached out to us again before a game, and Liz again fixed two jerseys. Since then, we have sent her five more jerseys. This season, and she fixed each one. There have been times when the turnaround time was very short, and she was always happy to help. She is such an amazing supporter of Nelson and takes pride in helping our students. Liz Wilbur is a treasure, and we are so thankful for her kindness. So thank you so much for your continued support, even after your due diligence of being an English teacher, right? Yes. Oh, my gosh, bless your heart. They have kids in there like me. Good, that's good. Yes, that's awesome. Just want to tell these people?
She taught most of the.
That's unbelievable. So we're going to. So I want to say, let's give a round of applause for Ms. Wilbur. All right, and I'm also going to give you a One Nelson mug. And so for those of you who don't know what these are, they're made in-house by someone who's actually in this room, and we appreciate it greatly, Ms. Knight. And it basically has a, yep, a little mug that has One Nelson on it. I'm going to keep it in its protective sheet. Now I'm going to break it before anybody else. Yes, ma'am, thank you so much for continuing to help us out. So we appreciate you. Thank you. All right, next up is recognition of a classified employee. So Ms. Cindy Taylor, will you please come back up? All right, so Cindy Taylor deserves to be recognized for her outstanding contributions, both in her role as a bookkeeper and in creating a solid education experience going beyond the walls of a classroom. With a 27-year tenure, it is evident that she is dedicated and hardworking. Cindy is extremely organized and manages routine activities both efficiently and effectively. It is a joy to collaborate with her on fundraisers that support the students and staff of Ty River Elementary School. I've witnessed her interactions with students in the morning arrival time, during lunchtime, or simply walking through the school office and hallways that have boosted student self-confidence, eased nervousness, and encouraged a positive attitude towards being at school. Furthermore, she has proven to be a dedicated leader going above and beyond in sponsoring the recycling club, kid care bags, and as chair of the Earth Day Committee. I am confident that Cindy Taylor is a deserving candidate for the One Nelson Award. Her positive contributions to our school community make her an exemplary employee. Thank you for considering her for this nomination. So congratulations. I'm not holding it up in front of you. Scared to death, I'm doing that. So congratulations. Thank you. All right, yep. Last but not least, Ms. Madison Tyree, will you please come back up here? All right, so Coach Tyree, she forgot to introduce herself.
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry.
It's okay. So Coach Tyree is a new teacher. So old dog, new tricks. You're a new teacher. I don't know what that means.
That's true.
Okay, that's all right. She's a new teacher who asked to teach a subject, who we asked to teach a subject for what she did not. what she did not... But she then went and took the practice test and passed it to be fully endorsed to teach the curriculum. Thankfully, she agreed to take on the challenge and has had a great year teaching Family and Consumer Sciences. In addition to teaching, Madison coaches varsity girls' basketball, was the first year for coaching the girls' varsity team, sponsors both the junior class and the FCCLA. Members of the FCCLA recently competed at the state conference of Nelson County High School well in qualifying more individuals to the national conference. So, we want to say thank you so much for your dedication to all aspects of Nelson County High School and NCTS, and we wish you the best of luck when you take your FCCLA students. So, congratulations. And we're gonna have this house ladies take our... All right, let me get you your mug, too. All right, so now, we get to recognize someone. So, Mr. Orlando Brown, please come up. So, it's been a busy week for Mr. Brown. He was most recently, and Ms. Garrett recently, at the Senior Scholarship Awards, but he served on my superintendent advisory. He's currently track team, involved in a lot of different things. But this year, the VHSL has put on a film festival type of situation. And so, Mr. Brown, congratulations, NCHS senior Orlando Brown, for becoming the first Nelson County High School student to create a film that has been selected for the VHSL State Film Festival. Orlando's film Equimity was one of eight experimental films chosen from over 110 submissions throughout the state of Virginia. Do you want to say just a quick snippet about what your film is about?
The film was basically about modern day life. You're waking up every day, realizing you're doing the same thing, but, you know, it comes to a point where that point ends soon, but we don't talk about that, even though we don't know, but that's what it's about. That's what it is about, basically about modern day, which is where you can't realize that you're doing the same stuff over and over. Until the point comes, like, okay.
And we don't talk about it. So, one of the things, one of the things that really impressed me with Orlando, when I first met him, he had just suffered an injury. And in talking with him, you could tell the impact it had, you're not sure. Like you said, sometime that point will come, and you're just not sure what it is. And I have had conversation with you, like, you gotta have faith in what you're doing and you believe in it, and you do everything you can to get yourself back on that path. And he did everything he was supposed to do, got himself back on that path, and is super competitive in track. And I'm proud of you, and I'm proud not only for qualifying for your state film and everything that you do, but I'm more proud of who you are and your willingness and your grit to do whatever it takes to come back into what you want to do. So, I'm really proud of you, and I'm all proud of you, and we want to say congratulations to you. And so, congratulations. You gotta smile.
Thank you.
You made it, right? That's the most important thing. All right, I believe that is... That's it? We're gonna remember our recognitions. Thank you. Thank you so much.
I hope we had our student rep go for comments from student rep before us.
Not at all.
Want to give her the heads up, so she can... All her stuff is new.
Okay, so, I'm gonna start off with the sports and like how... So, we have always bring sports in action right now and their records. So, girls' soccer, JV, is one win, three ties, and two losses. Varsity is five wins, three ties, and one loss. Boys' soccer, JV, is two wins, two ties, one loss. Varsity is eight wins, zero ties, and two losses. Softball, JV, is three wins and seven losses. Varsity is three wins and nine losses. Baseball, JV, is five wins, five ties, one loss. Varsity is six wins, six losses. Tennis is five wins, five losses overall. And then, for track, they're supposed to have a track meet today, but it got canceled. Their state meet qualifier so far is Sterling Williams in the 100 meter and 200 meter, Dylan Butler in the 100 meter, Garen Carter in long jump, Colton Baker in 200 meter, Anthony Giaccone Stry in pole vault, and the four by 100 meter relay team. And then, also, each girl this season onto the track team has scored points in at least one event at every meet. More often than not, each has scored in two wins per meet. Then, for our clubs going on right now, FFA has their car show and their track pool this Saturday. FCCLA will be fundraising for our trip to Nationals with a car wash fundraiser at the old Wells Fargo, Wells Fargo Current RE/MAX Building in L.A. this Saturday. And we will also be having the Ann's Breakfast Benefit in May 24th. Yearbooks, yearbooks are still for sale while supplies last. You can purchase them online at Johnson.com or from Ms. McCullough, and we will be having the yearbook signing party tomorrow at school for everyone to attend during the... SOL, end of the year SOL testing has begun and will be taking place for the next couple of weeks. And seniors will walk all the schools tomorrow morning, and graduation is May 16th at 7:30.
I say thank you from us for your work with us this year. It's been great, really been great to see you over there. It's been fun.
Okay, comments from board members. You wanna start, Mr. Turner?
Sure, happy to start. Let's see, so first of all, just so proud of you, Orlando. I have watched you, you have been simply amazing, and I remember the injury that you had, and look at you now. I am just so proud of your accomplishments. Second of all, Willie Wonka, oh, my gosh, it was beyond amazing. I think I was sitting kind of midway, and I felt so bad because I kept, you know, doing all the songs and everything, but so proud of those children, just an amazing job, amazing job. And certainly want to acknowledge the FCCLA.
FCC.
FCCLA. Because I've never said it right, do I? I am so proud of you all. I mean, just to think you all went to Virginia Beach and look at you now. So, just so proud, can't wait to see what happens in Orlando. And however I can support you, please let me know, let me know. And Ms. Wilbur, I'm just going on record by saying that you were the best English teacher ever. It's really nice to see some of our teachers come back and be recognized because you did such an amazing job, just so, so proud of you. And lastly, I certainly would like to announce that I will not be running for reelection next term. It's been an honor and a pleasure to serve for these last 12 years, representing the community and advocating for our students, teachers, and schools has been one of the most meaningful chapters in my life. I'm incredibly proud of what we have accomplished together, proud of how we have strengthened the academic program, proud of how we have improved facilities and supporting our educators and ensuring that every child has an opportunity to succeed. So, throughout these years, these 12 long, long, long years, I've had the privilege to not only serve on the school board, but also to step in leadership roles, both locally and nationally. It was an honor to serve as Chair and Vice Chair of the local board, and these roles certainly allowed me an opportunity to get closer to not only our teachers, but our principals who work so extremely hard, and our families, and helped to strengthen not only the school from the inside out, but the outside in. On a broader scale, I also was humbled to represent the state of Virginia as the President of the Virginia School Board Association and a member of the Executive Committee. That role gave me an opportunity to advocate for public education at the state and national levels, lifting up the voices of our students, our educators, our families, and helping to shape the policies that impact our children all across the Commonwealth. Every experience, I would say, every meeting, every decision, every conversation has left an imprint on my heart, and I'm grateful for the trust that you all placed in me. I'm grateful for the support that you all have provided me, and I am so grateful that so many of us have a shared belief that all children deserve access to an excellent and equitable education. So, to those who supported me along the way, whether through a kind word, or your vote, or a conversation, I want to say thank you personally. I want to... Your encouragement, your trust have meant more to me than you will ever know. While I'm stepping away, starting in December, I'm not stepping away from the mission of education. I will remain, as always, a proud member of this community. I will remain a fierce advocate for education, and that commitment doesn't end with an elected term. It's part of who I am and will always be part of who I am. So, thank you for allowing me the great privilege to serve you and to serve our schools. Thank you.
Well, let's see how you follow that one, George.
You don't have to do an exclamation just come over here.
Oh, there you go. No. So, that is gonna be really tough to follow. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well deserved. And I'll have to say that, you know, I got on this board seven years ago. Well, this, the end of this year will be seven years, through an interview process because there was an open seat. And our board has changed since then quite a bit, and we all come with different perspectives, different work backgrounds, different ideas, and all of those things. But the thing I'm most proud of is that we all come together with a consensus to do what's best for the kids, and Janet has been a huge part of that, so thank you for that. So, just so excited about all of the different recognitions tonight. That's one of the things that I say this every meeting, but one of the things that I'm really thankful that Dr. Hester does and her staff do is to recognize the hard work of people in the school system and in the community. I mean, the students going to FCCLA, going to Nationals, qualifying for Nationals, I'm not sure, has that ever happened? That's never happened, right?
We submitted it last year. We had one.
I mean, right.
We qualified in November last year, and this year we had eight.
Right, which is absolutely amazing, and that happens through hard work and good guidance is what, is where that comes from. So, really good on that. Orlando, I'm excited to see your film. I think, that sounds really interesting. I think that's really cool. And our school system is just full of students, they don't always get named, but it's full of students that have grit and determination, perseverance, you know, I don't even know what your injury was, but... I'm sorry? That's rough, that's really rough. And having been an athlete, when you get injured, it's tough because you think, well, I might not be able to do this thing anymore, right? And then, it's hard work to just get back to where you were, much less to get better than you were. And that takes a lot of determination, so it's a great job on that and well deserved recognition on everything that you've done. And also, the, what went on with the different schools, whether it's Earth Day or Career Day, the Career Day is near and dear to my heart because I think our primary job is to turn out good citizens in the school system and to help them achieve whatever it is that they desire to achieve, whether they want to go to college, or in the military, or go into a vocation. That is our primary job, and to turn out good citizens. Hopefully, some of them will come back here and be good citizens in this community. The community is also full of people that have gone to school here and come back here. When I look at the Business Honor Roll, you know, I've known the Saunders family for a long, long time, a homegrown business, you know, started by Paul, late Paul Saunders, and is carried on by his sons now and their families, and they've always helped the community. You know, might have left to go to school, but then came back and has always served. Jeremy Parker, I know him as well. He's also a product of the school system and went off also to Virginia Tech and then came back and started a business from scratch. And it's, and all of these businesses just do yeoman's work quietly, saying, oh, you need this? Well, we can provide that. We can do this. We can send somebody to help do this, whatever that happens to be. And it goes unsung most of the time, but we really, really, really appreciate those things because we're a small community. We don't, we kind of operate on a shoestring a lot of times, so we need that community involvement, and it makes our community richer, for sure. And there was one other thing that I was gonna say, but I can't remember what it was now, so maybe I meant the end.
If you remember it, come back in. Mr. Perkins?
I just want, it's gonna be short and sweet. Everybody for everything that you've done, all your accomplishments, the teachers helping the students reach their goals, you doing your thing, and everybody, past and present, for representing Nelson as One Nelson. I really appreciate it, and thank you all.
Thank you. And I'd say, anybody who doesn't think we're doing good things in Nelson, check these meetings out, check the schools out, check the kids out, check the teachers out, check the families out, check it all out, because it's a lot of good stuff happening. And as George and every, I think everybody else has stated, you know, we're a small community. We don't have the Fortune 500 companies here. We don't have all the big businesses, and so, we're so reliant on, as George said, our homegrown partners that own their businesses, small business owners, larger business owners. And you all step up and support the schools in a way that these kids will see the benefit of. If you had the opportunity to join the scholarship, scholarship recognitions earlier this week, you'll know that it is an amazing amount of money that is funded through this community to support our students to go on to whatever that next step is. Some of them might be career tech programs, some might be traditional four-year colleges, whatever, but that's all from the people who believe in not just the kids, but believe in the community. And so, when we talk about what, how we're preparing kids, and George talked about citizenship, it's the number one thing on how we're preparing our kids for the future. So, thank you to everybody. You know, if you're a past teacher, whether you're Mrs. Wilbur or you're Mrs. Saunders, we suck you back in. You never really leave, but the reality is, is that everybody who has been through this system sees the value and believes in it. And so, whether you're a part of it now, whether you were a part of it, I don't think thank you is enough. There's so much that you do to support it. So, we're sliding into the end of the year. This time next week, we got a group of kids that are ready to hit reality, the real world, and I have a lot of faith in this group. You know, we talk a lot about kids and where we are, and oh, the world's not about, this world's a better place with this group of kids, for sure, for sure. And Ms. Giles, I think there is no doubt that your imprint will be felt, the legacy you leave, all of that will be felt. We've relied on you, at least the six years that I've been here, for your wisdom, your knowledge, all of those things. And so, I wish you luck in the next chapter, whatever that may be, and know that you are appreciated and have been appreciated on the board.
So, she just said what I was gonna say? She just copied it off of my paper?
I did, yeah, I read it.
No, I just want to say, this past week, I was able to go to the FFA banquet, and I was able to go to the awards morning, which was more like, not, was not scholarships, but it was awards that kids get for like, you know, things like attendance and getting good grades over and over again, you know, they get academic letters, and I am getting ready to go to graduation next week, and I just have to repeat what you guys said, but you did it so eloquently, I wish I hadn't even said anything. But the kids that are coming out this, that are in the schools now are just an amazing bunch of kids. I mean, just like so talented in so many different ways and just like a really, like a high bar, which brings me back to Ms. Turner Giles, high bar. She went, you know, to the presidency of the VSPA, which, you know, first person in Nelson County, as far as I know, I don't think anybody else has done it, to take the leaders to, you know, as far as you can in the state of Virginia. So, very kudos to her, she did set the bar high. We will miss you, and, but I know you'll still be around, so if we have questions, we'll just call you. We're gonna, you're gonna be on that side soon. Yeah, let's see, graduations next week, there's a bunch of different things going on. I don't know if you want to hit on that, the calendar, Dr. Hester?
Yeah, I'm not gonna read through each one of those.
Yeah, it's quite a bit of stuff.
I can see it, but it just goes to show you that we've got 11 days starting tomorrow, and they are chock full of a lot of different type of events, and they're all important...
And they are chock full of a lot of different types of events and they're all important events. You know, recognitions, promotions, celebratory, um, events. And so, it, it's just cool. I mean, it's a, it's a fast and furious time, but it's exciting and it's a lot of fun and it's emotional, um, in many regards. And so, um, just kind of stay tuned. We've got a lot of things going on and, and always check out, uh, we, we post a lot of the stuff, um, on our webpages, our Facebook pages. And if you have any questions about what's taking place, I always encourage you to call the schools, call us and we'll let you know.
You ready?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, we'll move on to the comments from the superintendent and she rolls right into her pathways for success.
Yes.
And this is really the best part.
So, it, uh, as I mentioned, it's been a busy past few weeks. The last thing, we put out a video, um, you know, getting ready for spring break. And I said in the video, when we come back, it's going to go by quickly and it has.
We've got 11 days left. We are in the full swing of SOL testing and providing remediation and scheduling retakes. Uh, I do want to say I appreciate all of our staff and how hard they worked in preparing our students, uh, for these assessments, but I also am proud of how hard our students have been working to be successful. So, I want to thank for that. I do want to say, um, this is kind of a, an awareness aspect is we, um, we want to draw attention to a new TikTok trend and challenge that basically students force an electrical short, short circuit on Chromebook devices. And they do that by inserting items such as paper clips, pencil graphite. They've learned how to disassemble a regular everyday pencil and get the graphite out of it and cram it into the USB port. They push pins, folded metallic gum wrappers and other aluminum foil. So, what does that do? It sparks, um, it can spark a little bit of a flame, a fire. It basically punctures the lithium battery and so it poses a fire risk. So, what I am asking is, um, parents, guardians, students, understand that this is not appropriate. It is TikTok. TikTok is not always used for good. Sometimes it's used for evil. It's vandalism and also could result in having a conversation, um, in consequences from law enforcement. So, um, I want to thank Mr. Walker and Mr. Belaco for sending some messages home to their families. This is something not just impacting Nelson, it's, it's impacting, um, surrounding school divisions, um, surrounding states. So, it's something that hopefully we can nip this in the bud right now and prevent it from resulting in anything. 11 days left. We have 11 days. So, let's keep our eye on that ball and finish strong. So, shifting gears tomorrow, our seniors will participate in their senior walk in which that involves a parade, um, through each of our schools, starting at the high school, moving to the middle school, and then those students who attended Rockfish will go up to Rockfish. Those students who attended Ty River will go to Ty River. And it's an excellent way to celebrate our graduates and it gives our younger students an opportunity to see that end goal and it's really exciting for them to see the seniors. It's exciting for the seniors to see those young students, um, excited about them, but also our teachers. These are the teachers that, you know, sometimes the graduation ceremony, we have, you know, the students and the staff of the high school, but we can't forget that it was every other teacher leading up to that point that was incredibly impactful and important to them. So, that's a great chance for those teachers to see those kids. They, they, you know, the fruition of a, what, a 13-year journey. So, that's important for that to take place. Also, um, for those senior parents, don't blink. It's going to go by very, very quickly and quite frankly, for any of our parents. Pay attention to what's going on, celebrate those successes. We have a lot of things going on. Eighth graders have a formal tomorrow night. So, we have a lot of things that are really exciting. Next week, we'll have our senior night for spring sports. That'll take place Wednesday, May 14th. Got graduation on the 16th and, um, Mr. Walker indicated that a decision about whether or not it'll be inside or outside will, will take place by Wednesday. Keep an eye on the weather, which seems to change about every hour right now. We, don't forget, we have a few fundraisers going on, quite a few. I know we have, uh, the FFA car, truck and tractor show, so don't be afraid to go get your car washed at the FCC LA. Car wash up in Nellie's Ford and then head on down to the FFA event taking place over at the high school. And the following week is also filled with year-end activities such as awards and promotion ceremonies, field days and testing. Last day of school is May 23rd and teachers will have two workdays in the following week. So, that's, that's kind of my comments. And so, we'll lead into the pathways, if you will. Again, things don't ever seem to slow down. They only seem to gear up when we talk about our administration department. We have been working on title grants, um, finishing up the ones from, uh, this year and writing, um, applications for next year. Continuing to file insurance claims, attended division safety meeting. Every year required to, to have a division level safety meeting. So, Ms. Irvin in, in conjunction with, uh, principal, Mr. Ashley, and also some of the local, um, emergency agencies met to discuss crisis plans and other ideas that we have. She also attended the 13th Annual Golden Governors. We are moving forward, anybody who's been in the high school, we are moving forward with the renovation project. A part of that is also the funding aspect. So, closed out the bond anticipation note financing this project, also setting up activity funds, um, audit for the July 2025 and, um, finalizing property, auto, general liability, workers comp coverages. And then also attending, um, you know, we talk about working with our local agencies, attended, um, a meeting with, uh, the sheriff's office and, and DSS in order to talk about inter-agency communications and reporting. So, we appreciate all of the work in that arena and I am so sorry you didn't even get a chance to see those pictures. All those pictures represent just various, um, projects or items that, um, Ms. Irvin worked on throughout this month. So, my apologies, I didn't have the screen on the right one. Instruction, um, end of the year teacher mentoring. When we bring in new teachers, it's important to continue to provide the support for them. So, we have an ongoing mentoring program, not just their first year, but it carries on to the next couple of years. So, meeting with our new teachers, um, fun little, you know, the spring chickens, um, hatching in, uh, over at the high school, kind of being involved in, in looking at those instructional programs, um, really gearing up for the summer learning preparation. So, you see the two advertisements down in the bottom left. The school year ends, but we shift right into summer learning for our students needing just extra support throughout the summer. Continue with, uh, planning, uh, second annual professional development academy, um, opportunities in the summer to continue, um, growth, um, finishing out vows and V A K R P reporting, um, working with our VTSS coordinator and divisions at the end of the year reports. We had drive your tractor to school, um, a couple of weeks ago, and that's always a fun. This year, uh, it took place a little bit later than we've been doing it in the last couple of years, but it was, it was light out. Their weather was good. It was, it was fun to watch the, the students, uh, driving the tractors, even, even more fun to see how many female students were driving the tractors. So, that's great. Like we said, FFA High School held their banquets, um, and, uh, FFA participated in the Central Virginia Livestock Show. We continue to do the instructional aspects with classroom observations and secondary. And then our B R V G S students presented their capstone projects, which, um, again, when we talk about the faith and pride that we have in our students, when you take a look at those projects, they are phenomenal. Our other students are doing great things as well, but that's that culminating event for, uh, students participating in that program. We also are planning, uh, for administrators and tell month employees, um, May 23rd is not the last day of school. We kind of then shift into the major planning portion of our year and that starts, um, with admin retreats. So, we appreciate the work on that. For human resources and communications, there's a lot of trainings and a lot of exposure to information, um, that's required. And part of that is like teacher ed advisory where you work on the data-driven decision-making. And that was held over at Sweetbrier. Also Title IX training and updates to make sure that we're compliant and working towards the best interests of supporting our students and our staff. The HR department worked to, uh, coordinate the programs and also set up for the Golden Governor banquet. Um, as you see there, we're getting ready to celebrate our retirees coming up in June, while all the while still, um, advertising and filling our vacancies to make sure that we are, um, fully stocked on the high-quality workforce that our students and our staff deserve. For our, um, people personnel, it's been a big week for a lot of different types of events. A couple of weeks ago, they participated in the Tournament of Champions, which is for our adaptive classes K through 12, held over in Louisa. A wide array of activities, whether it's like, um, track races or baton swirling, um, obstacle courses, um, some farming animals, an introduction to, um, all these different experiences. And it was really a great experience for our students and I thank everyone who's involved in making that happen. Also, um, pardon me, um, Community Play Date. This is a, one of the first initial experiences that we have in trying to put on, um, these events where we can educate our community about the different things that we can provide to support our students, particularly our special education students. So, we had a play date back on May 2nd and we'll have another one coming up on May 16th and that will be held at the Heritage Center. Family Fun Fitness Night partnership with our prep program, Piedmont Regional Education Program. And is again, a great way, engage in cardio drumming, yoga, theraputy, um, able to take home some of these items, um, like an exercise ball, pool noodle, drumsticks, yoga mat, um, and all the while to help support families, um, develop their students. And Little Feet Meet was held yesterday, um, and that was at Fluvana. And again, this was for our, um, early childhood special education students. And again, um, a great way, uh, for our students to get out and be around other kids, um, experience some wonderful activities and just have that social aspect, but also the fun aspect in, in developing our students. And with our special education department also participating in developing our admin retreat. Technology, um, attended, um, sorry, um, continues to start, uh, figuring out Chromebooks and technology for summer learning. So, prepping the Chromebooks and working with administrators to get ready for that. Finishing up desktop upgrades, um, Chromebooks, um, getting ahead of any kind of issues with acquisition of Chromebooks as we rotate out on our cycles. So, appreciate, um, Mr. Cargill and his team for being forward-thinking and, and getting ahead of that to make sure that we can get the Chromebooks in and, and our students have the best devices to be able to work with. Working on, uh, NCPS secondary fiber upgrade, so making sure that we have the access to that internet. Also received confirmation from Calypso, um, to be able to, um, continue with the classroom innovation, um, and working through Virtual Virginia. Receiving new requests for video streaming. So, you see, like, we're streaming this meeting tonight. That takes some extra effort to be able to do. There's also been, um, the, um, Academic Day, um, musicals, all these different events. And it's an extra step that we are able to bring our community together, be able to show off the, um, the skills and talents of our students and our staff. But it also helps kind of, um, solidify and unify our community to be able to, you know, give access to people that might have not been able to be there in person, um, but they could certainly see it. I know from time to time, my parents in Indiana, um, log in and try to see what, um, what types of things our students are doing and, and they can appreciate that. So, I just, it's extra work, it's extra time, but I definitely think it's worthwhile for our community. Maintenance, um, we continue to work, um, with our, through our HVAC in Honeywell, um, and, and just kind of working out the kinks of some of the things. It's starting to heat up and, and making sure our chillers are kicking in. And so, I know Mr. Campbell has been working, um, a lot with Honeywell to be able to, to fix whatever glitches there are. They've also been able to add a lawnmower to the middle and high school complex, which helps them keep up with the mowing needs. Right now, they're going full force and getting ready for graduation and prepping all the, the campuses. Also participated in the division safety meeting. They're scheduling many events with the, uh, the EBI HVAC system for the remainder of the month and then working with contractors to work around schedules. You know, an example, I had a phone call with Mr. Campbell today saying, we've worked with the contractors to be able to make sure that any kind of the renovation isn't taking place to impede the Fourth of July fireworks. So, you know, we talk about these things that it's not just instructional. We are working hard to be able to support a lot of other areas, not only for our community. And what a great way to be able to do that. The fireworks that have been held at the high school have been great. We want to make sure we continue to support that partnership and collaboration. It just takes a little bit of extra, uh, thinking and scheduling when you're coordinating the schedules of contractors and everything else. But we've been able to work that out and not really inhibit the, the pro, the progress of that renovation. Transportation and safety, this has been, um, a big week in terms of working towards, um, supporting our safety, uh, aspects of the safety coordinator meeting with, um, the safety audit team made up of the sheriff's office, Nelson, uh, Nelson EMS, the emergency services, Wintergreen, Livingston Fire and 911 Dispatch. And all of that is to make sure that we, um, we're confident in the crisis plans. Our local, um, law enforcement agents and first responders are knowledgeable of what we're doing. So, in the event we, we, uh, need that, that extra support, they will be there. I'm also in a collaborative effort to try to support our local emergency services. We donated, um, bus 59 to Wintergreen and so they can use that for their different preparation and training. So, that was something that I appreciate, this, that, that work and, uh, collaboration with each other. The transportation, uh, team was a part of getting our, um, students who, uh, traveled to England safely to the airport and safely back, um, late at night. And you see that in the far right picture. So, they were a part of making sure our students get to and from very, very safely. And they also celebrated their transportation on April 10th. The whole entire transportation department celebrated, um, together by having a luncheon. And it's always great to, I had a, a privilege of being able to stop by and it's great to see everyone together because they don't, they don't work in the same building. They're traveling in different directions, but they are, they are a great group to get together and how supportive of each other, but of our kids. And they, they take our most precious cargo to and from home in a safe way and I appreciate that. School nutrition, uh, we tend, um, Ms. Canal attended the Region Five Directors Meeting. So, we continue to talk about growth and support. Celebrated National School Lunch Hero Day. So, this has been a big month of celebrating staff. Our School Lunch Hero, our cafeteria workers were celebrated on May 2nd. She ordered these, um, these T-shirts that really kind of go with the theme of the hero. So, we appreciate everything that they do. And, uh, at, at Rockfish, the cafeteria crew coordinated an opportunity to paint eggs and have the, the spring bunny that you see there come in and some others be able to read to the young, the pre-K and kindergarten teacher, uh, students, I'm sorry. So, that's, that was a lot of fun. And, um, I always like to kind of draw attention to the meals that have been served. For, uh, April, 11,230 breakfast, um, 16,737 lunch. And then we do after-school meals, um, through, um, the C A C F and that was about 739. And so, as we start looking at that, um, when we take a look at the rates in the student body, the breakfast at Rockfish was about 65%. We usually want them to be about 75, but that's not bad. The lunch is over 71%. Ty River breakfast 55% and 76 for lunch. At the middle school, 44% breakfast and then 86% of the population having lunch. And then breakfast at the high school, 39%. We all know teens sometimes do not like to have breakfast, but giving those opportunities for those students to have it and then lunch at 69%. So, you, we are feeding a lot of our students. So, I always just try to, to kind of keep that, that, um, on our mind. And I appreciate the cafeteria crew for, for being able to take care of that. In terms of community engagement, um, there's a lot going on and a lot of fundraisers at this time. And that's the way that our, um, PTOs are able to give back and support the students and the staff. So, um, from chocolate fundraisers to a color run coming up at Rockfish on the 20th. You know, we celebrated Orlando and his V H S L. I do, um, on Facebook, I do put out a newsletter that kind of recaps the month as well as the One Nelson winners and things that are discussed at school board meetings, just to kind of keep that line of communication. I mentioned how our school nurses went, um, out to Saunders Brother Market to be able to provide some services there. The musical, um, the, the sped events that we put on, uh, the, um, the National Honor Society put on a movie night. So, there's a lot of things going on where we're giving back to our community and bringing our community out to us. Our cosmetology students have their own salon. So, they're, it was kind of like their own business that they're putting on to be able to provide those services. Our high school, we have these squads and these are different groups of staff members who work to try to put, uh, do different things to support the goals of the school. One of the squads at the high school put out a community survey about what are things that you would be interested in participating in if we put it out? And we gave a list of about maybe, uh, 15, 20 choices. And, um, almost immediately, you know, we jumped up to about 44 responses and the last I checked was about 102. And it was really interesting the things that were voted on that they would love to have an opportunity to participate in. Cooking and baking, um, CPR, um, self-defense, um, automotive thing, like oil change, um, gardening and then sports camps. And so, these are all the different types of things that maybe, um, as we move through, we can put these on in the evenings or on the weekend, just to kind of provide extra support. I think another one was parenting, um, parenting opportunities. So, I just was, uh, pleased that, um, we had that response back. And, and the things that, that were, uh, had the highest return are things that like, I think we can do and I think we can do well. And then we have community members that I think would like to be a part of that. So, I just appreciate, um, the effort in doing that and the response. And like I said, last but not least, thank you to all of our teachers and staff. This is, uh, National Teacher Appreciation Week. I always like to broaden that to staff because it's everybody. But we also had this week, the School Nurses Day, um, School Lunch Heroes, our administrative professionals, and then also School Bus Appreciation Day. So, there's a lot going on over the past, um, month between, uh, school board meetings So there's a lot going on over the past month between school board meetings, and there's a lot to say, and nothing more important than thank you to all of our staff. So, thank you very much.
It's always amazing that you can do that in like...
Approximately 30 days, right? I mean, like, all of that stuff went on since the last time we met, which is just crazy. And thank you so much. Or do we have any, no, okay, so we'll skip that part, the comments from the public, unless anybody in the group would like to make some kind of comment.
Do we have any comments?
Nobody signed up, nobody signed up, yeah. All right, then we'll just...
We, we may have...
Okay.
FCLA has one.
Okay.
I wondered if that was you.
Yeah. You had to let her tell you.
Thanks, Miss...
Yeah.
Yeah, I can tell, and then you can, absolutely, please add in, please.
So, I'll introduce myself again. My name is Madison Tyree. This is my first year teaching Family and Consumer Sciences at Nelson County High School. It has been a year. We have done so many amazing things. I have built so many amazing relationships, and this has been the best first year that I had, could have ever imagined. Like I said, this is going to conclude my first year of teaching ever, especially in Family and Consumer Sciences, with Family and Consumer Sciences comes along FCCLA. And I know we've kind of been throwing those, those letters around, so let me just kind of tell you guys a little bit about what FCCLA is. So basically, their mission is just to kind of promote that personal growth and leadership development through Family and Consumer Sciences education, which I'm able to do in a lot of my curriculum that I teach, but also in the, in the club in itself. So through participation in this club, students will have the ability to acquire different skills and grow in different areas, like character development, creative and critical thinking, interpersonal communication, practical knowledge, as well as career preparation. And these are all important things that I do touch on in my classes, but FCCLA gives the kids an opportunity to really dive deeper into these really important aspects that correlate directly with their own personal success. FCCLA chapters across the entire country participate in various state and national level competitions and events. Back in April, I took 10 students, I had a list of 20 of them on there. I'm like, oh my gosh, a first-year teacher taking 20 kids to the beach. Let's take it back a little bit. So we kind of cut that back a little bit. I had, I took 10 kids, it was me and another chaperone that took them all, and we had eight out of the 10 qualify for Nationals. So it was a huge accomplishment. I was a basket case the whole time. That's why they were waiting for me to cry, because that's what I did when they were, you know, qualifying. I was, I was so proud. And I think that, you know, I always believed in them, but it was, I'm a first-year teacher, there's a lot of imposter syndrome that surrounds that, and they really kind of came in, and they took me under their wing. I'll say that. And that just kind of, you know, showed me that not only are they capable of amazing things, but so am I too. But yes, we went and we showcased those projects. We had eight students qualify. Like I, just to reiterate from earlier, Marissa Garrett, she was the first student to ever qualify for the national conference from Nelson County High School. But this year, we have seven others that are, that will be joining her, hold on, is it seven? Yes, seven that's going to the conference. That will be joining her in Orlando, Florida, which is so, so exciting. 10 out of 10 students actually left Virginia Beach with a medal, so everybody placed, but we just had those eight qualifiers. So it, really exciting stuff. And just to kind of, you know, say their names and just recognize them for the amazing work that they've done. Christina Harlow, Marissa Garrett, Willow Garrett, Ava Proctor, Abigail Fitzgerald, Alexander Rains, Malini Garcia, and Nevea Williams. I just want to acknowledge their exceptional work, their presentation skills, their leadership ability, their work ethic. I have no doubt in my mind that they are going to go on to do amazing things in their life. And I got to really see a lot of that in FCCLA, which made me so happy. While it was a very, very exciting weekend, I told you guys, we made a lot of memories there. It is far from over yet. Like I said, we are going to Orlando, Florida, getting to make a pit stop in Disney World, which is so exciting. But with that being said, we also have to scrounge up the money to, to get there. Like I said, we'd only had one student ever qualify for Nationals before. I'm a first-year teacher, and I, you know, I just kind of wanted to come in and at least get one to qualify. But lo and behold, I had eight qualifiers, which is so exciting. It is such an amazing problem to have, and that's what I keep telling people. It is, it is an amazing problem to have. But, you know, it's going to, it's, it's looking at about $2,000 a student, which is very, very expensive. However, this is something that is very important to us. While we have started fundraising, I think I have at least one student that is over halfway from her goal, which is awesome. We have a lot of things in the works, but we still need a little bit more help. And not only will our students have the opportunity to continue to blossom more and more as leaders and as students, but they will also continue to make memories that will last a lifetime, which is so important to me. I mean, I, I'm not even exaggerating, every five minutes at my door. But I, and I wouldn't change it for the world, truly. So we just kindly ask that you, you know, consider donating and just, you know, spread the word too, of what we have going. It is an amazing thing. We're going to be doing amazing things. This is a great cause, and these students have truly worked so hard to get to this point, and they deserve this more than, than anybody. So just, you know, one, I know that I just have one here now, but thank you guys for an unforgettable experience, an amazing year. I could not, like I said, if you would have told me that this is how my first year of teaching would have gone, I would have told you, you are lying, like, you know. But it is because of them. And I think that it's just kind of one of those things, we, we make the perfect equation together. It's, it's, these students are awesome, and I could not have gotten them there if it weren't for them beating me halfway. So that's just a little bit about, you know, kind of the situation that we're in right now. Like I said, it's a great problem, but if you guys would just kind of, you know, spread the word, get the word out there, if you're willing to donate, it would mean the world to us. And like I said, there is donation, donation that is too small. So, and if you, did I miss anything? If you have anything that you want to add?
I don't think so, I think you can go, yeah.
Okay, okay. I know, I'm sorry, I told, I tell my kids all the time, I'm a professional yapper.
Do you know how far along we are with donations?
Yes, ma'am. So I, I do have a spreadsheet breakdown, and I can always share that with you after. I'm, I'm not a numbers person, so I don't have the numbers off the top of my head. But I think I have about one or two people that are about one-fourth of the way paid for their trip. I have one student who is about halfway, and there are a lot of other students getting there. They're very, they're very hands-on, they're wanting to participate in these fundraisers. We had our community yard sale last weekend, and we actually made $900 from that. I ended up, we got a little bit of extra change to equal it out for. So we made about $900 from that. We are currently in our Call-A-Thon that just started yesterday, and we are, I think at 1,500 now with that? Last time I checked, it was about...
I haven't checked recently.
Yeah, it was about 1,500 overall. So it's, and I am kind of asking that the students just to make sure that everybody is, you know, no person is reaping the benefits of, you know what I'm saying? So they are coming and participating and trying to work towards their individual trips, just to make it a little easier to figure out where, you know, funds are and stuff. So if you want to know specifically where each student is, I would love...
Just wanted to kind of get a feel...
Yes, ma'am.
...of what we're getting to.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I know this trip is coming up.
Yes, it is coming up. It is coming up. And that's also, you know, why we're, we're begging and pleading and having all these events, because just, we did not plan for eight students to qualify. But like I said, it is an amazing problem to have. It's amazing. But yeah, and I do have the breakdowns of that, but I did not unfortunately prepare that for you.
Appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Proud of you all.
No, they're, they are amazing, and I told you, they're waiting for me to cry, because they know. But, thank you guys.
Can you have me finish that? All right.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you guys.
All right, so let's move on to the con... Actually, if anybody wants to go ahead, you can leave now, unless you have duties. If you want to stay, it's always up to you guys. I just want to let you know, you could go home if you wanted to. The consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or anything? No? I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
All right. No opposition? Then the consent agenda is approved. Now we're on to items for information. The first item is the meeting minutes. If you guys will read them, make sure that any corrections or anything needs to go to Tammy, that'd be great. And then we will have an updated information on capital improvement from Mrs. Shannon Irvin, because I do not see Mr. Campbell in the room.
That's really wanted to be here.
But he had a pressing event, his son's last performance, I believe, at the high school. So he's there supporting his son, so certainly understand that. Though I am a poor substitute, I will admit.
Not at all.
So just to give you an update on some of the things that we're dealing with, the water-cooled chiller from Carrier still has some kinks in the technology. The equipment works, but the equipment isn't talking to other equipment that we have. So there's some communication issue that Carrier is working on. Honeywell has done their part, and now we're waiting for Carrier to finish it up so they talk. Now, the air chilled chillers that we have are also having a communication issue with our old controllers. They're designed for the new equipment that's going to be put in this summer, but to get it to work now, it's taking some finessing. And so they work manually. So in the mornings, we had to go in and set them to work for the day. It's a headache on our part, but we do have cool air coming now that we understand what the problems are. The next project that we've been working on is the four-inch water line to separate the high school and middle school water supply. The line is in, they're waiting for the meter to be purchased and to be put in. There was a five-week delay in getting that to us, so they have done all the work up to and including putting the line in and all of the work inside the building. So they're just waiting for that meter to hook it up. Another thing that we are working on, our contractors are here, they're in the building, they've torn out ceilings in a number of places. They work from 3:30 in the afternoon to 1:30 in the morning until school is out, and then they'll work, convert to a day schedule. There is a map there that has been provided to show you the areas that they'll be working in and when they'll be there. We do have a problem, and I think that was in some of the pictures that Les had shown earlier, with the shading of the greenhouse. For whatever reason, the motor kept running as the shade was being pulled, and it got tightened up. And we think it's going to be a very expensive fix. So we've turned in an insurance claim to VACORP, and hopefully they'll help us get that done. Is it, I think that was the last thing that he had on the list.
The last one?
Yep.
Yep.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, the greenhouse issue. So do we, is that something that would be under warranty or failure of the system itself?
Yeah, we've been in contact with the manufacturer of the greenhouse gross fan, and they're supposed to be sending people on site to take a look at it. And we'll determine whether it's a warranty coverage or whether it's an insurance coverage. But we wanted to alert our insurance carrier just in case it wasn't covered.
Because we're not that far, what are we, how many years in are we on the greenhouse at this point?
November of...
Of '22.
Let's say, two years.
October or November of '22.
We bought, we purchased it, and it took a while for it to get there, and then it took a while for it to get installed, so if you had the warranty issue, it's very interesting to see if it's still under warranty.
Yeah.
Well, that should happen at a turnout. I don't know. Yeah, it should happen, like, you know.
Tell us. Thank you. This chiller has been a challenge.
It is. They had to retrofit it to get it in the building and to get it set up. So there are some communication issues. But the good thing is that the equipment does work. It's just getting the technology to talk to the other parts of the technology.
But we are getting any controls at some point, right?
We are, as part of the summer work.
Yeah, I struggle with, with this process, because they put in the original stuff that we've had, and they've been working on it. So, I mean, this, to me, I think the people that we're relying on, not our people, but the contractors that we're relying on to do this, they should have anticipated this happening.
Tell Mrs. Curry find a communication picture, please.
Congratulations.
Okay.
Because his kid is just, like, everything, everything. Now we have a field trip request proposed for spring break 2026.
So we just got back from England a little while ago, so thank you so much for approving that. It was an amazing experience. We ended up taking 20 students. We had 15 parents and grandparents go with us, which was phenomenal. We got to see Stonehenge and Windsor Castle, and we got to see real, a real Roman bath with a geothermal spring, and the kids learned a lot and were fantastic, and took videos and made presentations in their visiting classrooms to talk about it. But what ended up happening was, we inadvertently scheduled it for the same year that they do the New York trip. And a lot of the students who were in advanced drama were also signed up. And so the question was, do we go, I'd like to go to even years, international travel if possible, and then odd years, New York trip. And so the question was, do we do it next year, or do we do it in three years? But there were a lot of students who weren't able to go to England, who have come and asked about going to a trip. So right now, we have 10 students who are asking if it's possible. We haven't advertised. We did an interest meeting for the potential and had 10 people show up. And it was the, like, the night before, kind of. And so I'd like to, if possible, take a group to Greece next spring, in spring 2026, April 4th through the 11th. The cost would be, if they, if they signed up by the end of May, it would be $3,499 per student. And we already have the contract with Air Market UVA to do fundraising there, and that was a really big help. We ended up raising almost $20,000 last year to help pay for the bus and for excursions and opportunities, and some of that was through grants and community donations, but also through the hard work of parents and students. And so I know that it's only 10 months away, but there's a lot of interest and, and ability to, to go and put that fundraising in. We would go to see the Parthenon, and we would go to see the Temple of Athena, and we would visit Greece's parliament, and, and go to see a lot of historical sites and different types of architecture, as well as going to a cooking class, and a, an interactive pottery making activity, and, and a cruise to see some of the Greek islands surrounding it. So if it's something that, that you would see fit to allow us to pursue, I think it would be another really fantastic experience for students. So, you can go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. I'm guessing this is for Hester.
Yep. I'm getting to the right part. And this is for, oh, of course, it just closed out. This is for Division Literacy Plan. You, we have signed off, we've developed, we've signed off on the Division Literacy Plan, but every, every periodically, not every periodic, but periodically, we have to update it. So this is simply the approval of the updates. We're moving forward, we're doing really well. I think what we're pleased about, as we kind of monitor some of our incoming assessments, and we talk and we work with our principals, we're starting to see a lot of the effort that's been put into our literacy thus far over the last couple of years. We're starting to see it pay off, and so we'll continue to keep moving forward. This year is, is very unique in that we have brand-new English standards that are being tested and brand-new curriculum, along with other standards that are new to us, like math. So there's a lot going on, and we feel really confident in our literacy plan, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention that we are required to provide these updates, and just wanted to put that in front of you and just let you know that part of the approval process.
Thank you.
Any questions on that?
You might as well stand here, I think.
I thought it was next, but...
Yeah. Then you were on Title I, Family Engagement.
Yeah, finally, a part of Title I, and that's the program that really addresses at-risk student bodies. We have two schools that qualify for Title I schools, and that are, both are elementary, so Ty River and Rockfish Elementary. And a part of that Title I program is there's certain stipulations to receive the money, and a part of that is parent engagement. That is also something that is a part of Title III when we work with our English language learners, but we couple it all under this, because it is also a part of our at-risk. It has a strong alignment with our literacy plan as well. So all of this is together. We really want to focus on the parent engagement that takes place at Ty River and Rockfish, but we also broaden that out to the engagement at the division level. We have literacy nights that also fall under this parent engagement. We have literacy nights that also fall under this parent engagement. A part of that is you need the feedback and responsibilities of the parents to be engaged. So it's getting the feedback from the parents, but it's also having, you know, kind of defined roles of what we expect from our staff, what we expect from our schools, and our parents. And so that's a great way to go about it. So there's a lot of emphasis and effort put towards putting on these types of events. Just recently, we've had literacy nights. And we don't just focus on our at-risk. It's really a big focus on all of our students, but, you know, we really look at the at-risk students for our Title I schools. Like I said, we also look to provide that support and engagement for our English language learners. We had a family night for those students as well. We integrate conferences and making sure we're bringing in and advertising for all of our parents to come in for different conferences and various events. So that's something that we're really looking forward to, to continue. And again, that alignment with our literacy plan that we believe strongly is really taking hold with our students, but getting that parent engagement piece and bringing back that support from the parent side.
All right.
All right, cool.
All right. Next, we would have, I guess Ms. Ervin will come and talk about the Title I Part A and C, Title II A, Title III A, and Title IV A grant applications for the next year.
This is actually a strange year as we're looking at federal programs, because we don't know what they're going to look like when they're actually approved for next year's budget. So we have prepared applications similar to what we have done in the past, thinking that the funding would be similar. That may not be the case, but the advice that we're getting from the Department of Education is business as usual until we know something different. So we have before you our applications for our federal programs. Title I, we use primarily to pay for our reading specialist and instructional coach. Title II, we pay for halftime FTE for our math coach at the high school, and for tuition reimbursement for our teachers that have yet to achieve full licensure. Title III is with our ELL learners. Title IV, we use for a halftime assistant at the high school in an alternative program, and a third of the salary for an in-school suspension person at the middle school and staff development, professional development. So the sum of all of those grants is listed in the packet, but Title I is 512-487-17. Title II, which is possibly in jeopardy, is $72,193.59. Title III, possibly in jeopardy, $6,021.16. And Title IV, which is possible in jeopardy, a $40,186.18. So that would be $132,421.34, thereabout, that we have included in our budget that may not come to fruition as we're looking to balance the budget for next year. So we have those applications before you. We're going to ask for your approval. We're going to send them in and hope for the best. If you have any questions about any particular programs, please let me know. Okay, you're welcome.
And just stay here. The next is the 25, 26 budget.
So, over the course, oh, you got a lot of chicken scratch there. So over the, of the course of the budget season, we've been closely following any kind of developments out of state budget and also federal budget. In March, we presented our budget in which you approved it. I appreciate that. And also, at that time, the county was putting forth a balanced budget with the capacity to fully fund. We have been keeping an eye and have been aware that there's been much conversation about federal programs that have been identified as areas that could be adjusted. In fact, we participated in a federal funding forum where we outlined each of the areas where we received that federal funding, the overall cost and what it really goes to, and we've identified positions, you know, specifically Title I. We fund specific people in specific positions out of that. And we are starting to see where the money that we do receive for Title I is not aligning itself with the total costs of those positions that we've been funding to a deficit of, was it $40,000?
Overall.
Overall, for Title I. That is not a decrease or a cut from the federal government. The federal government, at this point in time, is doing the funding for Title I, at least for this year, as well as sped. So we feel really good about that. However, we are seeing that perhaps Title II and Title IV will, we will see a financial impact on the federal side from that. And I will let Ms. Ervin talk a little bit more in-depth about that and what it addresses. And I say all this to say that we start to see the federal government funding shaking out in some of the ways that they're looking to address that. And we align that on May 2nd, Governor Youngkin signed the budget, and we're seeing that matching up what we thought it was going to in March. So that is a positive thing in terms of K through 12 education. Despite a reserving of $900 million, we don't see how that's going to overall directly impact K through 12. What we're seeing it a little bit is from the federal side. In addition, in conversations with the county, we're being asked to kind of review our budget and see if there's a possibility of reserving $150,000 to put towards, a goodwill gesture towards a bus. We appreciate the funding and the support of $600,000 that we will intend on ordering for, we have ordered four buses. We're just being asked to go back and see if it's a possibility to use $150,000 out of the remaining million, which, what we would have to do, and I'll remind you of when we passed the budget, and the increase in asking for 1.6 million more than what we asked last year, is that goes towards reinstating the full-time assistant principal, an addition of 12% for insurance, that we saw an increase. And also, a middle school sped teacher, and then an additional teacher at Rockfish due to SOQ, increases in enrollment. So there's really not a whole lot of flexibility there in terms of those were the needs that we've identified to be successful. You know, when we brought back an interim assistant principal at Ty River, the immediate impact that that made was felt and articulated to us. And so we understand the importance of that in a lot of different areas. So we have begun the process of identifying areas that, like we did last year, identifying areas that if we needed to address $150,000 from the county side, what are some of the things that we could do? But we're now getting the information from the federal side that it may be more than that. We may be looking at 200.
32 addition.
Yeah, an additional 132 to result in an overall deficit of 282. So we now find ourselves where we were, we were feeling pretty good about, you know, where we were without really knowing about federal, but we're finding ourselves now back in a situation where we're going to have to identify possibly some things. And again, you know, these conversations are kind of in their infancy in talking about it and being able to see, so that'll take a little bit more conversation to understand the overall impact. But again, you know, and Ms. Ervin will talk a little bit more about the specifics of like Title I and who that goes to, but it goes to people. It doesn't go to excess things that are easy to cut. They go towards people that, as I've mentioned, when we talk about our literacy plan, there are laws, you know, the Virginia Literacy Act, that require us to have specific positions that require us to do certain things. We're having changes in math, and we'll start to see through legislation some requirements of what we need to do. So when we go back and we look to scale, there are some things that we can identify. There may perhaps be some vacancies that we won't fill, or some positions that we haven't been able to hire, and maybe that can have some reserve there. But that is the position that we're in right now, to start to identify areas to see what we need to cut, not fill or adjust in one way or another. So I'll pass that baton off to Ms. Ervin.
Okay. I think earlier I told you guys about the positions that would be affected right away. We're looking at the halftime math coach, the half-alternative ed IA, the third middle school, in-school suspension. And then previously, we had had a fourth of our director of instruction salary taken out of Title I. We had to take that out to get the Title I budget to balance, and we're going to have to move that over to the regular budget. Due to carryover that we're going to have out of this year's grant over into next year, we think the impact will only be about $15,000 from that one position. As Mandy said, we'll be looking at positions, if there's any lagtime between resignation or retirement and a person starting, we'll garner those savings. We'll look at any positions that aren't able to be filled due to an applicant pool shortage and try to, you know, put those there without making such draconian cuts that would affect people and their livelihoods. So that's the first place to go. We also are at the point where personnel needs to issue contracts because teachers are going to be leaving us in how many days?
13.
Yeah, so this, most employees will see a 3% raise with a, it's basically a 2.5% cost of living and a half a percent step. Teachers are a little different in that we targeted certain areas where we were behind the market, and those that we were over-market would not see those increases. But the governor's budget that was passed was with the understanding that there would be a 3% for SOQ positions. And so I guess we would like permission to go ahead and issue contracts with the understanding that if we have to make cuts, it wouldn't be due to raises. So think about that. Also, the governor's budget included some changes for the current year's budget, including a bonus for employees, $1,000 for full-time employees, and we would propose a $500 bonus for part-time employees through identified savings out of this year's budget and the state money that's going to come before June 1st. Between the combination of the state money and our savings that we've identified, we believe that we could do that with board approval.
I think it's always important to note that when you're reading the headlines of, all teachers get 3% raise, no, SOQ positions get 3% raise. SOQ positions get the $1,000 bonus. And that's before you start adding in other factors. So I always think it's important to identify, we understand that each and every one of our employees is valuable and integral to our success. That is why we were giving it to all of our employees, because that is what's, you know, to pick and choose who's more important, that is not ideal, and it's not accurately reflective of their value. So that is also a part of this.
Yeah. I would like to say, though, that if we were fully staffed throughout the year, we would not have had the money to do this. This is coming from positions that we've just been unable to fill or to find candidates. You know, we have a number that have been filled, unfilled most of the year, if not all of the year, so.
And this is a struggle not only for Nelson. There are divisions who are not able to do this, or they are only able to do $250, you know. So I think we feel pretty fortunate that, you know, maybe the reasons we're able to fund it aren't as ideal because we can't, you know, fill a vacancy, but for those who are with us, that is the, that is the bonus, and that is that, kind of that loyalty pay because they are with us and they do deserve it.
And those are also subject to the, the formula, right?
LCI.
LCI, right. So basically, 2/3 of our employees are SOQ, right? And then we have to, local is required to pay 66% of all of that. So like when you think of, like, the governor signed something that gave us money to do something, they only give us.
Not the overall show. Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a portion of it, and the rest of it is through, you know, economies or whatever savings if we have, or the largesse of our locality. So, and the understanding of, you know, our parents and community members who get that and know that we need to, as community members, pay for a valuable service that the school system provides to the community.
It was very interesting that they made the bonus payment this fiscal year, because we're going to get it in June, and our fiscal year ends June 30th. So that window to match the revenues to the expense is very little, very short, so.
I mean, I will say we've had a heads-up about it, but you don't know until it happens. And I think that's been the most tenuous thing about this whole entire experience. And a month ago, we felt like we knew exactly where we were, but, you know, there were some question marks. And so that's the thing that, you know, that's how this, this process works and we'll continue to work through. I know the Board of Supervisors has their public hearing on the budget, I believe, on May, is it 13th at 7:00? So I'm sure there'll be some more work on that between May 13th and June 10th, when their next meeting is. So we know that there'll be a lot of work done on the county side, and we'll still be paying attention to what comes down through the federal, federal, you know, pipeline. We're still waiting to hear what decisions are made on the E-rate, which would, which could possibly significantly impact us. So we're still, we're still in a bit of a waiting game and paying attention to some things.
Yeah. We did talk about CEP at the last meeting, that that could possibly be in jeopardy. Our food service supervisor went to her state meeting and learned that in all likelihood it would be a year delay. So we probably will go business as usual for this coming year, but the following year could be a change. So at least we have a little bit of breathing room to get ready for that.
So just so, for people who don't know what CEP is, that's the free reduced lunch for everybody in the.
Community eligibility provision, that's where each one of our kids that goes through the line will get a free breakfast or free lunch.
Right.
So those numbers, you know, I read off a little bit earlier, reflect the individuals taking advantage of that and using that.
Anybody have any other questions? Thank you, guys.
Keep up with.
Yeah. You guys ready for items for action? You want to wait till George gets to that? Oh, we can just keep going, I know. All right, so I will entertain a motion for the approval of the Division Literacy Plan.
I move that we approve the Division Literacy Plan as presented.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
George has approved the Division.
Yeah. All right, Division Literacy Plan has been approved. Now I will entertain an approval of the title budget applications as stated.
I move that we approve Title I Part A and C, Title II Part A, Title III Part A, and Title IV Part A budget application.
Got a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, well, everybody's approved that one as well. So now we have a field trip request for the FFA to go to the.
Bonus.
I skipped one?
See.
Oh, sorry, I was going to, has it been added in? All right, I was in the paper one. Sorry, guys. I put the, the. All right, so the approval of the bonus for full and part-time employees.
I'll make a motion to approve the $1,000 bonus for all full-time employees and $500 bonus for all regular part-time employees.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good, that one's passed as well. Sorry, I didn't mark through it. Okay, now we have a field trip request for the FFA to go to the FFA Leadership Camp.
I move that we approve the FFA field trip request to their FFA Leadership Camp.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, everybody said aye, so that's approved as well. And we have now the field trip request for next year's international field trip. Can we give them permission to go?
Can I make a motion to approve them to move forward with the international field trip? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I do want to go to that, too. Okay, so we.
Just personnel.
Just personnel, but do we want to talk about that at all, or you want to do it as other matters? Let's do it as other matters.
I guess, I don't, we need to, do we need to amend the agenda?
I don't think so, but I just, I mean, we were just conversing about whether we want to.